Good evening and welcome to the Mill Creek Township School District Committee meetings for Monday, April 7th, 2025. First meeting this evening will be the Instruction and Student Services Committee, followed by the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting, including with the Finance and Operations Committee. There will also be a committee of the whole meeting this evening, along in the committee meetings. While we encourage the public to attend in person, all meetings will be streamed live on YouTube and will be recorded for future viewing purposes. You can also view this evening's agendas as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. I'd also like to remind all speakers, core team members, and board members to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones so you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on YouTube. During each of the committee meetings, we provide the opportunity for the Mill Creek Township residents and taxpayers to ask questions regarding any item listed on the agenda for the committee meetings. Same protocol applied to all the individuals who wish to address the board. If we're asking a question, please indicate which agenda item you are asking about. The committee chairperson will review this at the appropriate time during their committee meeting. If you do not have any questions but simply would like to make comments or a statement, we invite you to attend and participate in the regularly scheduled school board meeting held on the fourth Monday of each month, or to participate in the committee of the whole meeting that sometimes occur after the completion of the three committee meetings. Tonight, we do have and will have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled, which includes the opportunity for the residents to speak and make comments. If you'd like to make comments this evening, please complete the visitor request to speak forum located in the back of the boardroom. Details can be found on our website, which each of the meeting announcements. Thank you for your cooperation. We appreciate your input, your feedback, and we get the first committee meeting this evening is Instruction and Student Services, Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you. Item 1.01 roll call. Would you please, Mrs. O'Connor?
Ms. Winchell?
Here.
Ms. Philbeck?
Here.
Ms. Nussham?
Here.
1.02 is approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
2.01, I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee meeting minutes of March 10th. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, this evening, there are six items for action to go to the meeting at the end of the month. Item 3.01 is the Social Studies 6 through 8 Resource Contract.
Good evening. I am here to bring forward the 6th to 8th grade social studies resource recommendation. So, how we... Okay, got it. So where we started was with our purpose and overarching goal I presented to you in the fall. Really what it came down to is our resource for social studies middle school is extremely outdated. It was even more apparent when we implemented the ELA resource because there's a lot of literacy that needs to happen in both, and there was just a huge hole in that social studies. So our real goal in finding the resource was to engage those diverse learners, all of our special needs students. ELL is growing in our district, so we wanted to make sure that we had a resource that helped them with that. All of the reading that's required for social studies is on grade level, which is very difficult for a lot of our students. So we really need something that's going to help with that. Also integrating those literacy skills and leveraging technology. Right now, they have a textbook. They don't have any technology that goes along with it, which is very difficult when you have middle schoolers carrying textbooks back and forth from home and school. So where do we begin? We started with researching our resources. So in the fall, the department decided as a whole that we were going to pilot McGraw-Hill and HMH. As we started digging into that, they realized like, oh wait, there might be other resources we want to look at. So we added SAVIS, and at the very end, the one in the bottom corner is called History Alive. They had heard about that from another district and they just wanted to check that out. So I was like, look at all of it. So when we make our decision, we know that we're going with the one that we want. So those are the four that we really dug into. So our pilot teachers started in May of last year. They signed up. I had eight teachers, which is great for a social studies middle school department. As you can see, they were across all the grade levels, all of the schools. We had one teacher that will soon be retiring, not retiring yet, but they decided they didn't want to vote in it, but they wanted to be a part of it. So he was part of it, but didn't put his two cents in as far as which one to move forward with. So our timeframe was they volunteered for piloting, they received their materials, we had all of the training. In the bullet, that's the October-November pilot for McGraw-Hill, that's when we decided to also include SAVIS. So we kind of adjusted the timeline a little bit. So they really dug into HMH, McGraw-Hill, and SAVIS, and then they just looked through the History Alive one. In February, they met as a department. Everybody that piloted, as well as all of the other teachers, have attended all of the sessions. So they still understood what was going on, and they provided feedback for me. So through the feedback, the whole process, we had constant meetings where we talked about things. They met with all of the vendors multiple times. The teachers were amazing at reaching out to the vendors, asking questions, getting information. At the very end, they all filled out a Google form with lots of information, lots of feedback, and had a discussion based on where they wanted to move forward as a department. So based on that, they decided that they want to move forward with SAVIS, My World Interactive. So there's three different textbooks that we would be purchasing, one for sixth, one for seventh, and one for eighth. And then there's just a snapshot of the dashboard of what the online looks like for both the teachers and for the students. So what led to this decision was the teacher feedback, like I said. The online resources were huge for our teachers. There's a ton of interactive things too that they really liked on the social studies end. And then there's something very cool called the 3C framework that's embedded in it, which is college, career, and civic life, which they loved because it fits perfectly with our portrait of a graduate. So here's some of the pilot teacher feedback. These are just things that the teacher said about SAVIS and what they loved about it. One of the things that stands out to me is they have something called hip hop history. And so their raps that they teach the kids based on history, and they loved that, and the kids love that. So lots of things that aren't available to our social studies team right now that really they were like, this is going to make the kids even more engaged. So a couple of the concerns that they brought up, there is one giant textbook, and I actually brought the textbook for you guys to look through. This is one of them. They're very large, so they're worried about... They're worried about the students carrying them around. So we decided that we were just going to do a class set in every single class. So there'll be 30 books in the classroom. The exact textbook is online for students, so they won't have to carry them back and forth. They can access it online at home. They can actually download a PDF of it as well. So if they don't have internet or they're going somewhere that doesn't have internet, they can still have access to the textbook. So they'll have the textbooks in the classroom, but they won't have to be lugging them around. The second thing was that the SAVIS's most recent update is 2019. And that was a concern for the teachers because if this is a seven-year cycle, like it's going to be extremely outdated again, once we get to that. So I talked to SAVIS. They don't have any plans right now of updating, but they said within the seven years, they will be. And when that is available, they will provide that to us. So online is continuously updated, but if they decide in print to update anything, they will provide that to us as part of our contract, since we will still be in that seven-year period. The only other negative that they were worried about is the reading sections are really long. So like the initial whole group reading is like seven to 10 pages, but they decided as a department, they can work really well together, picking apart what part of those reading passages and kind of create resources as a whole that they can use that wouldn't be as long of reading. So given all of the concerns, they still felt like this was the best one, and they could work through those concerns.
Hillary, can I just ask a quick question about the second one?
Yep.
You said they would provide the textbook. Would they do that free of charge?
Yes, that's part of our contract. Yeah, I made sure with them because I was like, we don't want these for seven years. If you're going to update something, they said when they decide to update, they will provide that with us free of charge. Yes. So I passed those around, but here's an example of some of the things that they will see. So there's just a snippet of everything. The interactive journal that I sent around, it's like a soft-sided one, that could be part of the purchase. And initially, we had that in the contract. But after the teachers piloted, they said they didn't actually want those every year, the workbooks, because they didn't feel like they used the entire workbook. However, they can print any of the resources that are in there. So they felt like as a department, they would rather just print the ones that they wanted to use instead of having another resource for the students to have. So that interactive journal is super cool, but they didn't want it in person. So I said, we can figure out what that looks like and send it to a print shop easily and print it. The little thing at the bottom just shows you any of the readings online can be read aloud to them. So that was huge for our department. They don't have to read it aloud, but it's available to read aloud any of the pages from any of the workbooks, any of the reading. So any of those students that struggle with that can get online and listen to it, be read to them.
Does it come in multi-language?
It does. So it comes in 70 different languages, which they were also really excited about. Also, it can translate worksheets for the students as well. So a couple of the interactive resources, there's quest projects in every single unit that basically puts them on a quest in history, and it's a huge like inquiry project that they can do. There's embedded videos throughout, mini-games for each. One of the things they loved was the primary resources, or the primary sources are all interactive. So there's a picture of the Declaration of Independence, all those little dots the kids can click on, and it like explains to them what that part of the Declaration of Independence is. Again, they can read it, they can listen to it. It's just very interactive, which they definitely don't have right now. So they were very excited about that. So this goes back to that 3C framework, career, college, and civic readiness. In the end of every unit, they have something that ties into that. So this one was an example of be an informed citizen. So in this unit, they learned all about the citizens at that time, and then it kind of brings it back to them, like it's important for you to be informed. What are things you are concerned about? How can we move forward with that? So it really ties that in. A couple of the teachers that piloted did a couple of these and loved it and said that the kids really, it really made them understand better history because they could see it in real time as well. So how do we proceed with this? So all of the teachers will receive manuals in May. So I talked to SAVIS. They're happy to get those in their hands so that they don't get them the day before school starts, obviously. The student resources will be delivered and distributed to the schools before school starts. They are going to do one full day of in-person training this summer. The teachers actually asked for that so that they can start the year off. Um, they are going to do one full day of in-person training this summer. The teachers actually asked for that so that they can start the year off ready to go. And then there's a bunch of embedded PD, there's some virtual PD, they'll come back in person. And then they want collaborative grade time as well to work through this.
Will the day of training that they get be provided by the company?
Yes. Yep, they will come um, in person. So we would like to move forward with Savis, my interactive. The contract is um, on the board docs if you want to see it. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Three point zero two is the school AI purchase.
Yeah, this is a continuation of uh, the discussion that we had last month. Uh, you know that the next great frontier in technology education is artificial intelligence. Uh, so over the past nine months, actually predating that, but especially over the past nine months, uh, the curriculum department, as well as a number of other folks have been looking at what are the best artificial intelligence tools uh, for us to begin using with students. And uh, you know, knowing the devices as well as the virtues, it's critically important for us to make sure that we have privacy and data sharing uh, and other sort of mechanical tech logistical pieces worked out uh, and that we can have a hundred percent surety in any product that we get. So you had some questions uh, last month related to school AI and some of those things, privacy, data sharing, et cetera. Uh, so we had more discussions with the company. We put together the document that you see in your addendum there in the admin content. Uh, but certainly Mr. Theme is here to speak to some of those tech issues uh, tonight. And hopefully we can answer any additional questions that you might have. But if we want to start with the questions that were asked last month.
Thank you. The, this process has been really kind of uh, eye opening and and kind of fun, actually, kind of to go through, believe it or not. Um, Joe and I, Joe Scott and I had the opportunity to kind of go through the terms and conditions, come up with the questions that we had. Um, tie, you know, we kind of developed a game plan for what we would like to see when we're vetting up these companies. First things first, are they SIP or are they HIPAA compliant? Um, and this check the boxes, school AI check the boxes right away. Um, then we came up with a list of questions. We sat down with the representative about how they handle data, what they do with data. Um, and the answers were all very, very satisfactory, to the point where there was a, a quick story. There was a second product we looked at, which accidentally we got the, a spelling wrong. Somebody had asked us to look at an AI product that had the spelling wrong. And when Joe and I looked at it, it was horrible. Like it was the, the opposite of what we would ever, ever want. It was a Chinese company. The wording in the company was that we will sell your data. We went, I mean, Joe and I were like, I can't believe this company exists. Well, then we found out we were looking at the wrong company. Um, so but that process really kind of opened our eyes to, okay, this is a great example of what we don't want. This is a great example of what's not appropriate for the school district. School AI is the complete opposite. They do a lot of things right. They check a lot of boxes as far as how the data is handled, how the data is secured, what data is deleted at the end of each session. There is just a lot of good things that school AI does. So I can address any of the questions if you have. I mean, the document that you have in front of you addresses some of the, the questions that were asked at the last meeting. So I, I, I mean, I'd be happy to go through that, but you have the ability to read that yourself.
Do we block other AI websites for the students? Chat GPT, Claude, Gemini?
We have a, a lot of them that are blocked. This Linewise is working with us to, because they are categorizing AI as a category. And so we are working with Linewise to be able to, to block everything for students and then only have the ones that are available for students that we want. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to block home computers, only our computers. Um, but yes, we, we, we do block some and we will be blocking more as we go on. Thank you.
And if it helps with some clarity, the, the velocity at which the tools are developed is something that's problematic for us, correct? I mean, almost every week we find two or three new tools uh, that are out there through various channels. Uh, and, and most of them are well intentioned, right? Teachers finding new tools that they can use with students. Uh, so in, in an effort to sort of keep pace with that, uh, we've been vetting those tools out, uh, especially over these past two months. Uh, so we provided teachers with a, the, the district authorized AI list as referenced in the board policy a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and we're cautious with that list, necessarily so. Uh, in other words, we say these are the resources that have been vetted so far. Most of them are for teacher use only. And that's professional discretion, as with any other web-based resource. They can use that to develop lesson plans, to develop more engaging activities, uh, generate ideas, et cetera. Uh, we have some of them that are student facing right now. Some of those are part of products that we already pay for. Uh, some of them are not, but their terms of agreement are such that we can, we can safely rest on their data sharing and their privacy. Uh, school AI will open the door for us to finally have a fully functional platform that's as equally depth, uh, has equal depth for students as it does for teachers with the, the security and the privacy package completely intact. So this would be our enterprise subscription. In other words, our main one enterprise subscription with an AI developer uh, for next year. And of course, as you can understand, a major part of our year of technology professional development program next year as well. Thank you. I'd like to maybe speak, if I could just add one piece. One of the questions was uh, about our pre-K through twelve uh, setting for this. And to speak just again quickly about that, uh, why, why would pre-K students be using an AI tool? You might understand, the way that the licensing is done through the company is that the licenses are paid for per student for the teachers to then have access. So although our pre-K students don't have their own devices, for example, and might not be using it themselves, the teacher will certainly be using it to develop again, lessons, time-based activities, worksheets, even uh, other professional resources like parent newsletters, for example, or translations for parents. Uh, so the teachers will have access to develop lessons and activities for the students, even if the students might not be physically using a computer.
And we certainly um, appreciate the time and effort you put into getting the answers to those questions that we asked last month. Um, item three point zero three is the Penn State Bear and Student Teaching Affiliation Agreement. We have those with all the local colleges and, and um, so forth. It's a very normal um, agreement. Three point zero four, the Globe Weather Pathways Project Conference.
And this was a request from one of our teachers uh, to attend a conference uh, down in uh, you see there Charleston, South Carolina. Uh, this is being put on by the University Corporation for Atmospheric Research, Center for Science Ed and Penn West University and the College of Charleston. It looks like a great event. Uh, it would actually be no cost for us. Uh, and the dates you see are there, June tenth through June thirteenth. Uh, we would only need to provide a substitute for a couple of days there.
We love those no cost conferences.
Certainly do.
So much.
Certainly do.
Three point zero five, Grafton Integrated Health Network Letter of Agreement.
So this is for our annual train the trainer recertification uh, this summer. This allows designated special education team members to become Ukeiru trainers who will in turn train our MTSD staff members across the district.
And finally, in the action items is three point zero six, the Special Olympics Pennsylvania Letter of Agreement.
And this is specifically for our unified sports program at the middle school level. Um, they are working on Bachi there.
Okay, thank you so much. Move into the information items. Four point zero one, the Future of Education Technology Conference Shareout.
I'll just give a quick introduction. Feel free to come on up. Uh, but we are excited to bring three conferences to you tonight uh, by way of the attendees and them sharing out. Uh, so the first will be that Future of Education Technology Conference.
Good evening. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Megan Mingarelli. She's an interventionist at Tracy Elementary and she was very sad she couldn't be here tonight. Um, but she did want to express her gratitude, so I'm going to read what um, she wrote for you. Um, I would like to express my gratitude to the school board and administration for the opportunity to attend the FETC Conference in Orlando, Florida. Throughout my career, I have actively sought ways to stay informed about current educational trends. This conference proved to be exceptionally beneficial for my professional development as it allowed me to learn new teaching strategy through hands-on workshops, engage with keynote speakers who challenged my thinking and network with fellow educators from across the country. As an academic interventionist, I now feel better equipped to support classroom teachers with the skills and insight I gained at FETC, ultimately enhancing the accessibility and engagement of learning experiences for both educators and students. This conference was one of the most valuable learning experiences in my thirty years in the M, at the Mill Creek Township School District. And I strongly encourage the provision of similar opportunities for other staff members. As an academic interventionist, I feel better equipped to support classroom teachers. Um, I encourage more opportunities like this to be provided for other staff members. Thank you very much for this experience. That was naked.
Alright, so I'll keep it short. And I wouldn't, for the more the IT and cybersecurity side. And I have to say that this conference was extremely, extremely valuable. Being able to talk to a bunch of other districts that are going through the same problems, looking at the same privacy policies, looking at the same products that we are, and you need to talk to them and see what problems have they found? Where, where have they found solutions? Was extremely diff, or extremely beneficial. Additionally, getting to talk to districts that have been through, there were several talks on districts that have actually been through a cyber incident where they've had a problem. And you need to talk to them on where did they find their weakness to be? And what steps did they take after the fact that were directed by their cyber insurance or from other providers on how to resolve this and prevent it from happening in the future so that we can take those steps now, so that we don't end up in the same shoes as they did. Additionally, the, one of the big new things that was coming around was uh, student, student data, data privacy agreements. And that's something I know we're, we're trying to get a head start on because it's been, it's spreading. Each state is doing it kind of separately. But putting an exact regulation on what data we can share in addition to what COPA and FERPA do. But getting ahead of that and you need to talk to other districts that are already having to do that is, was very beneficial. So thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Melanie Hamilton. I'm the computer science teacher at JS Wilson. So I can give you the teacher side of perspective of going to this conference. So first of all, I also found a lot of value in it. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to go to the conference. I found that the biggest takeaway um, was related to AI since that was the really big hot topic this year. And as I went in, it was what do we do with AI, especially with the middle level where legally our kids can't use some of the AI tools that are out there, but we know that they are using them. So the one presenter used the phrase, students should just, students shouldn't just be an audience to their learning. And that has stuck in my head, knowing the learning center experience is um, valuable to them. But also, how do we approach AI using that? So in discussions, um, I first just been having conversations, what do you know? What is it? How are you using it? And speaking about a school AI, I was able to sit in a vendor presentation on it. And also a couple of the presenters use that in, as part of their presentation. So seeing the different ways that we can use it, one, as a teacher, the tools are very valuable to save time, to help us with those um, students who need the extra support. But also the student side, there are some really creative things that educators have found. The one, and this speaks to an elementary level, but they use, school AI has this sidekick. It's like this chatbot that you can create the parameters for. So you give it uh, possibly a role. So this educator said, alright, sidekick, act as a butterfly, little caterpillar that's going to go through metamorphosis, come out a butterfly. And they brought it up with the elementary students and the elementary students got to ask it questions like, what does it feel like? Is it painful? Is it, is it, you know, what do you feel like when you're out of the, the chrysalis? So to use it in that way where sure elementary teachers, we don't really, or students, we don't want them really using the tools, but to show them that there's value and that's one of the ways you can use it, not to get answers, but to learn. Um, last thing is there was also a lot of talk about, even though it was a tech conference, how to do things unplugged and the value in taking the screens away, having them collaborate, uh, use those computational thinking skills and the problem solving. And then how that translates so well to using technology and in their other academic disciplines. So again, thank you. I got a lot of value out of it.
I'll be brief. Uh, so in my twenty, almost twenty years uh, being in the school district, I've only attended four conferences. This is probably, I think, the fourth conference I've ever attended. And uh, I've, I've been to a lot of conferences as a technician, as a, an IT tech. Uh, this was my first time attending a conference as a leader of IT. And I, my head hurt by the end of the day because there, it was just so different. The, the tracks were so different than what I was used to. I've been to PT and C in the state. PT and C is a wonderful conference that it focuses, it focuses very much on teachers and education and very little or less on the administration side of technology. A conference like the Future Educators, a technology conference that focuses on everything. There was a track for technology leaders, which I found incredibly useful. Um, and you know, that we sent five people. I think I saw Joe Scott once in the entire conference just because there, there is so much variety and so much stuff to attend and see and listen to. Um, everything was wonderful, even the conversations where you get to learn that you're ahead of the curve in some things and behind in others. You know, when having the discussions about AI, the discussions that we have been having, I'll tell you right now, there are school districts in the state that aren't having these conversations. The questions that you asked last, last board meeting, there are boards that are not asking those questions. As much as I hate to say, we are ahead of the curve when it comes to some of the AI stuff. It doesn't mean we're great. It just means that we are, we're doing some nice things here with it. Um, and, and being able to go to those conferences is a real kind of eye opener to see um, know where we are and, and where we need to go and, and how we're doing. So thank you very much for allowing me to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very helpful for us to hear information about the conferences you've gone to and how useful they are. Um, four point zero two is the Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo and Conference.
Hi, everybody. So I'm Lisa Tato, um, and this is Carol Elliott. And so we were invited to present this year. Um, it was, it was both of our first times presenting at the PT and C conference. And so it was a very exciting opportunity. And while they covered my costs, uh, they didn't cover, you know, hotels or food. So I just want to say thank you very much for allowing me to do that and have that experience of presenting. We learned a lot, not only to present, but we got to attend the sessions as well.
And the district sent eight uh, employees altogether. Not all of us are here, but we have a nice representation um, from various roles in the district. And um, like Lisa said, we were able to present something that we do here in Mill Creek, which is working with growth mindset with our older kids and our younger kids. Uh, we had a whole um, PowerPoint presentation for our session. And we went to a session the night before and it was on, it was called Curipod. And it's taking a presentation and putting it into their AI and having it, um, they make it into something very interactive that students can respond to questions, they can draw their answer on their device, they can take a poll, um, all kinds of things. And Lisa and I were like, oh my gosh, we have to change ours. We're going to put it in there and see what happens. So we took our presentation, put it into Curipod and then we were like, okay, this is so much better.
Right.
So um, and we feel like the people that came to our session, there were probably over fifty people.
It was standing room only.
There were a lot. We were on the very last day.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we felt like that really well, but um, it was fun to take something that we learned uh, the night before.
Right.
And um, that inspired both of us to um, be a presenter in October at um, one of our in-services. So we're going to present the Curipod to our teachers and hopefully they'll find the same value in it. So um, thank you again for letting us go.
Oh, and I just, can I add?
Yeah.
I just want to add that we presented on growth mindset and the initiative that Carol and I started in the district, which is the Mill Creek Mindset Club. We have one of our members here today who decided to attend to show some support. So we take uh, high schoolers who, and they go to the elementary schools and they mentor the elementary students uh, playing field day type games to develop a growth, growth mindset. So they teach them and then the students are able to apply those skills immediately in a very fun, engaging way. And it's been super successful, not only for teaching elementary students. Um, and we're collecting data, so you will have some feedback on the data that we're collecting as soon as we, we disaggregate it. Uh, but it's, it's not only good for elementary students, but our high school students are learning tremendously valuable leadership skills. So thank you so much for your support.
Okay, now I am wearing a different hat. I am speaking for Nicole Donikowski, who could not be here this evening, but also wanted to express her gratitude and thanks. So she is a special education teacher at MIHS. This year was my first experience at PT and C, and it was wonderful. I was able to attend many sessions where I learned more about all of the accessibility features that are available for teachers and students via Google, Chromebooks, and Apple products. I sincerely appreciated the time we were given to listen to other educators and professionals on how to use these tools and how to effectively and efficiently implement them into our classroom setting. Additionally, I was able to expand my knowledge about AI. This is very beneficial as it is becoming more and more prevalent. I want to thank the school board and our district administration for your continued commitment to providing teachers opportunities to expand their knowledge and to continue learning with professional conferences like PT and C. Thank you.
My name is Erica Young. I'm a 12th grade English teacher at McDowell. I went to PT and C not only as an attendee, I've gone for multiple years. This was my first time. I presented twice. The first one was AI as your classroom sidekick, where I taught teachers how to use some of the tools that we already implement in the district to enhance their learning. And I also taught one about showing teachers how to lead students in effective AI use. And so in my own classroom, I've already used some of those AI strategies, and I just wanted to bring you some data. And one of the things that we did is an approach to independent reading that's different. This semester, my kids have to choose two independent reading books. And that's a lot. I teach 12th grade. At that point, they think they know it all and they would like to leave. And so what was really important to me was that they actually engage and are not fake reading. I give them 15 minutes twice a week. And I wanted to share our end of quarter three survey. I just picked some random students. It says, what has been your favorite assignment activity or discussion in the second half of this quarter? And hands down, we had 95% of kids say that they like the independent reading. And when I asked them why, they said, it's because I customized the project. What they know is that I customized it with AI. They didn't know how. So I want to explain that process to you just very quickly. What I did is I asked the students how they like to demonstrate their knowledge. And they explained some of them like art, some of them were into music. I have a kid in a band who really likes to write his own songs. And so I used that information. I took the author and the title of their book and how many pages they had read. I teach a lot of CI classes, which means that I've got all the special education kids in my room. And so sometimes they're not able to make it through a whole book. So what do you do at the end of the quarter when the book isn't finished? A lot of those kids thought that they would fail, but they didn't. Using AI was able to customize how many pages they read, author title, genre, what they liked. I gave them three project options. And to quote one student, if I could change one thing about the independent reading project, please give me less options because I did find it difficult to choose what I wanted to do. I'm so sorry. Sorry. So my kids, 89% of them said that customization made their project more meaningful. 87% of them said they felt more confident in what they turned in. And if it's not like the last time in the fourth quarter, Mrs. Young, I will be very sad and probably won't have the motivation to do it, just being honest. So since returning from the conference, I've been able to use what I've learned. I've also used it with some of our teachers. We had an in-service on April 4th, and I had no less than four teachers asking me questions about Canva and Diffit and ways to interact with your ELLs. So I really appreciate the opportunity. My cost was covered as a presenter, but my hotel wasn't. My substitute really appreciate that. And I'm hopeful that not only will I be presenting in October, but my goal is to present at ISTI in 2026 in Florida. So thank you guys so much.
Sorry, I'm a script kind of person. Good evening, members of the school board, administrators, and MTSD community members. My name is Shannon Holly, and I'm the chorus teacher and musical director over at Westlake Middle School. I want to first thank you for the time to speak tonight and to share my experiences from the PT and C conference in Hershey this past February, where I had the opportunity to explore the intersection of technology and education. The conference provided me with invaluable insights that will not only shape my own teaching, but also guide my planning for next year's district-wide professional development initiative through the aspiring leader program. At PT and C, I explored a variety of tools and technologies that will enhance our students' learning experiences and support our educators into great technology in meaningful ways in the classroom. One of the tools that I particularly was very excited about is something called lovable AI. And it's an AI tool where you can actually create an app. And so I was curious about this after, and I created an app for a March Music Madness competition. I used to do this at Chestnut Hill, and I wanted to bring it into Westlake this year. So it's a friendly competition amongst the teachers where they can pick a song they think the students will like, and then there's different rounds of voting. So right now we're in the final four. And so I actually created this app where students can go on and vote for their songs. I never thought that I would be able to say that I created an app, but I did. And so I thought that was really neat and something that we could also share with our students. And if you're curious, Party in the USA is currently taking on Can't Stop the Feeling, and Eye of the Tiger is competing against Bon Jovi's It's My Life. So it's down to the wire. Another resource that was very fascinating, which we've talked a lot about this evening, is school AI. So it's a very innovative way for students to interact, like Melanie was saying, through the the sidekick and creating different spaces. And so one way that I'm looking into using this next year is in my musical productions and have my students kind of have a conversation with their character to kind of develop that a little bit more and say, you know, how would this character act if this is the scene that they're in or the scenario? And so I was trying to think of different innovative ways that the students can use that tool. All of these insights are also guiding my work as I lead and help plan the Year of Technology October in for in-service for next year. As a part of the aspiring leadership program and future and future educational leaders within Mill Creek, we're each signed different leadership activities that will help us prepare for an admin role. And one of the key tasks that we're given is to collaborate with members of the district core team on a research-based project. And so I'm particularly grateful to be working alongside the wonderful Krista Coppola. And I'm helping to plan the October in-service, all relating on technology integration. And this event will provide an opportunity for educators across our district to present the tech tools and strategies they're using in their classrooms and share successes and learn from each other. Although teachers still have a week to submit their proposals, I'm very excited to say that our teachers that are standing up here and many others that have also attended PT and C in past years are have all applied and submitted proposals to present. And I think this speaks to the powerful ongoing impact that PT and C has had in our district and our district's approach to technology throughout the years. So I finally want to express my sincere thank you for allowing us to attend. And I look forward to share that amongst my college, my colleagues and the district. So thank you.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Wow, education is changing.
I give you a lot of credit changing your program the night before.
Okay, and the last shareout is 4.03, the Pennsylvania Association of Middle Level Education Conference shareouts.
So I'm Brandon Oathout. I'm here with Diantha McCotry and Kelsey Richards. We represent three of the 10 Mill Creek Township School District employees that attended the Pamley Conference. And for me, the Pamley Conference was both a end of the year kind of way to sum up a lot of efforts that we have made at Walnut Creek throughout the school year. It's also been a springboard into a lot of future endeavors and discussions that we're currently having inside the building. We were able to attend sessions over three days that have energized myself for other people that attended from our building. And, you know, where we're at now is we have a faculty meeting tomorrow after school. And with several of the ideas that we've brought back from this conference and from our book club study that we've spent all year doing, we are now kind of planning where we're taking the building next. And I think that that is an incredibly exciting thing for a new administrator. And I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to attend this conference with not only, you know, some of the best leaders in my building, but with some great leaders from other buildings in the district. And I think that that's really powerful. So thank you.
It must be a Westlake thing because I have a script too. And the music competition is pretty intense, like Shannon said. I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to attend the recent Pennsylvania Association for Middle Level Education Conference. It was an enriching experience that offered valuable insights and tools to better support our students, teachers, and school community. One key takeaway was one of the sessions that I attended attended on P VOS reporting, which highlighted practical ways to use data in guiding student growth and making informed decisions. Something that was really unique about that particular session was that P VOS is getting some updates this summer, maybe July. So they were able to show kind of some sneak peeks that are not available to the public yet on some new reports and different views that are going to be coming out soon. So that was really beneficial. We also had the privilege of attending Katie Powell's keynote address, which was featuring her book, Boredom Busters. Her presentation was filled with creative and engaging strategies to combat classroom monotony. And it was honestly a show in itself to see her present her keynote address. She was bopping all over the lunch area. So it was it was really, really great to hear her speak. Upon our return from the conference, I shared Katie's website. It's Teach Beyond the Desk with some of our teachers. And that website features all of the strategies that she uses to make some of the boring but necessary things more exciting and engaging in our classroom, like lectures and worksheets and homework. So I shared this with our teachers. And that very week, as I was doing some walkthroughs, I saw teachers using these strategies in their classrooms, which was really exciting. So bringing higher levels of energy and enthusiasm through paper airplanes and musical desks. So really positive stuff. Westlake is also considering offering a book study next year utilizing the Boredom Busters book. And Mrs. Patton shared with me that she talked with Mr. Costello over at JS. And maybe that's something that we could do like a little bit of a group effort on. So that's exciting. Finally, I learned some new fresh approaches to PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Program. Westlake is very proud to have an amazing top-notch PIBS program, but we're always looking for new ideas. So after attending a few sessions geared towards PBIS and just kind of increasing positive behaviors and culture overall at the middle school level, I left with some new ideas such as the golden ticket for extra special behaviors, a 100 board, positive postcards, and scratch off mystery incentives. These fun new incentives will be instrumental as we continue to enhance our program at Westlake. Thank you for supporting professional development opportunities like this one. They not only contribute to our growth as educators, as those that attend, but ultimately benefit our students and school community as a whole as well. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Richards, and I teach 7th grade math at JS Wilson. First and foremost, I want to thank you for this professional development opportunity. This was such a positive experience that focuses on what makes middle middle school so great. As a classroom teacher, one of the most impactful sessions was from the keynote speaker, Katie Powell, as Diantha said, the author of Boredom Busters. She discussed ways to transform traditional worksheets into dynamic movement-based learning experiences for our students with little to no preparation for our teachers. I've been using some of these activities in my classroom and noticed the instant engagement in conversations between students, increased retention, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills. For example, instead of students passively completing a worksheet, students might solve problems through scavenger hunts, interval races, and even paper airplane building to reinforce their learning in an exciting new way. They really like the paper airplane one. With these activities, she discussed ways to use error analysis, differentiation for our learners, and many more research-based teaching strategies to make learning effective. JS Wilson is considering the Boredom Busters as a book study next year for our teachers. Again, thank you for providing Mill Creek Township School District teachers and administrators with opportunities to attend these conferences to continue to grow as educators.
Thank you very much. Sounds like you missed some exciting conferences. Wow. 4.04 is the high school testing dates of June 11 and 12.
Thank you. So one of the things that we've been talking about again for the past couple of months at the high school level is the the end of the year sort of assessment motif, right? Typically, you know, some major tests, some summative tests come at the end of your high school courses. And looking at the way that we can help position students to perform their best on those exams, the high school had brought to us a little while ago, the possibility of doing testing days on the last two days of school. And what that means is that students would really report for only half the day. In other words, they would report on day one, for example, for their first block and their second block with the express purpose of taking their final exams only. And then students would be dismissed after lunch. The primary driver of this, of course, is positioning students again to perform their best. If they have less exams to prepare for, then they can prepare better. They simply have more time to take less tests. And some of those tests are not just, you know, strictly paper and pencil. Some of those are project-based. If that's the case, students will come in, they'll present their projects on those days to the rest of the class. But what we would like to do is take those last two days of the school year and this year pilot exactly that. Testing days, the structural framework, students report at the regular time. They take their end of course assessments in the first and second block, and then they go to lunch. We will have lunch offered on those days in the same way that we always do. Transportation will be structured appropriately so that students can get the bus home when the day is done. The teachers would remain for the full day, and they would do, of course, the grading of those assessments. They would also have some office hours, so to speak, so that students with questions about the exams for next day could come and meet with them, as well as some other professional development responsibilities there. So we'd like to pilot that for this year. I think the high schools put a good framework together for that so far. And we want to see how it goes. Hopefully, it reduces stress and it allows students, again, to really do their best on those major, major end of course assessments.
Thank you. And item 4.05 is the Asbury Field Trip Change.
Speaking of golden ticket winners, like Ms. McCotry just said, this is part of their Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Program. The Asbury folks would like to take their golden ticket winners, those students, to a Sea Wolves game in May, which of course we support.
Very good. Thank you. And my team has noticed that we never voted on bringing items 3.01 to 3.06 to the meeting at the end of the month. So let's pack up to the action items. I'd like to make a motion to bring 3.01 through 3.06 forward to the meeting at the end of the month, please. We have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion about any of those items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and finally, 5.01, Instruction and Student Services Questions from the Public. Are there any questions from the public related to any of the items we've discussed this evening? Hearing none, I will move to 6.01 and make a motion to adjourn the Instruction and Student Services meeting. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next committee meeting, Personnel and Policy Committee.
Brink. Thank you. Item 1.01, roll call. Mrs. O'Connor, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Brink.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
And Mr. Kobilka is absent.
Item 1.02, approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda. Kind of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 2.01, meeting minutes of the Personnel and Policy Committee for March 10, 2025. I'd like to make a motion that we approve those minutes. Kind of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have four items this evening. Item 3.01, Policy 234, Pregnant Parenting Married Students First Reading.
Yes, so this policy was updated for the for Title IX with all the appropriate updates that have come out with that new legislation, as well as it provides options for modifications, for reasonable modifications for individuals that have pregnancy or parenting or pregnancy-related conditions. It also expanded on those modifications, adding an elevator access.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we move Policy 234 to the board meeting at the end of the month. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 3.02, April 7, 2025 Personnel Committee Report. At Grandview, we have a leave of absence of a 5th grade teacher and a 2nd grade teacher. At Tracy, we have a resignation of a staff nurse. We also have a leave of absence of a psychologist. At Walnut Creek, we have a resignation of a staff nurse. We have a recommendation for an 8th grade social studies teacher, temporary professional contract, a special education assistant emotional support, and a special education teacher life skills, life skills support, temporary professional contract. Westlake, we have a resignation of a special special education assistant. Uh, Westlake, we have a resignation of a special, special as education assistant autistic support. At JS Wilson, we have a leave of absence of a seventh grade teacher. At McDowell Intermediate, we have a recommendation for an AFJ ROTC instructor. At McDowell, we have a correction of a special education teacher learning support at McDowell Intermediate to McDowell Temporary Professional Contract. Mill Creek Educational Center, we have retirement of an IT system coordinator after thirty six years of service. We thank you for your dedication to the school district. We also have a resignation of an eighth grade girls basketball coach and a middle school football assistant coach. We have a recommendation for an HVAC technician, a maintenance custodian and transportation secretary, a registration secretary. We have six board approved volunteers. And for first student employment activity, we have two monitors, the driver, two terminations and three leave of absences. Under the, also under the Mill Creek Education Center, we have recommendations for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six athletic supplements, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six football supplements, twenty twenty five summer school teachers and twenty twenty five summer E S Y staff. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Personnel and Committee Report with the exception of the, summer E S Y staff physician life skills support, um, page six, the last position. Can I get a second? Okay. I'd like to make the motion to approve the Personnel and Committee Report as stated. Kind of a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item three point zero three revised job descriptions. We have several, uh, revised job descriptions. Would you like to make any comment, Dr. Jablowski?
Uh, no, these are, uh, a lot of these job descriptions are making them aligned with, uh, the various, uh, uh, job duties that they will have across the district, making sure that they're more reflective of their responsibilities that they have, as well as articulating the agreements that they are now a part of.
And item three point zero four, the E S S contract renewal.
So this contract is, uh, an extension for two years, uh, that will start on July first. The rates have not changed. Um, we can terminate at any time. We just have to give ninety days notice. It's an extension of the previous contract. Um, and I know that there was an appetite to, uh, you know, get a state of the substitutes that we have and the fill rates that we have. So I do have an update if you guys would like that. Um, overall for teachers, um, starting from the beginning of this school year up until today, uh, we did have them run the numbers for that. And there's a ninety one percent overall fill rate. Um, with many of our schools in the mid nineties. Um, for instance, Asbury, uh, has a ninety five percent fill rate. Chestnut Hill has a ninety five percent fill rate, Grandview ninety one percent. Um, JS Wilson ninety two percent, McDowell ninety four percent, Tracy ninety two percent, Walnut Creek, very high, ninety eight percent. Uh, and Westlake ninety one percent. Um, and then the remaining three schools that we have um, are in the upper eighties. We have Bell Valley with eighty seven percent, uh, Ridgefield at eighty eight percent and McDowell Intermediate at eighty four percent. So we have a very good, robust fill rate.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we move items three point zero three and three point zero four to the school board meeting at the end of the month. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Jablowski, if we have ninety one percent fill rate, that still leaves us about forty five teachers that are open every day, right? That's still a pretty big number.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're pleased with it. Yes, there's definitely, you know, with our large numbers that we have, um, with about four hundred and fifty teachers. So, you know, give or take about that amount. Yeah.
We had the, um, board teacher liaison meeting tonight and somebody made the suggestion that we treat other retired teachers in, from Pennsylvania, regardless of whether it was Mill Creek Township, whether it was the city Fairview, and pay them in the same fashion. And I thought that was actually a pretty good idea. If you, if you're retired certified teacher from the state of Pennsylvania, pay them the same rate. I thought that was a good idea, something to think about.
The higher rate that we have, that higher geared rate.
Correct.
Yeah, we can explore that.
Fifty two dollars higher.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we can absolutely take a look at that.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item four point zero one informational items. We have no informational items. Five point zero one, questions from the public. Is there any questions from the public? Item six point zero one adjournment. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Winchell always has the most interesting committee.
Okay, let's move forward then. Uh, onto the Finance and Operations Committee meeting this evening. That roll.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Ms. Pascal.
Here.
And Mr. Lindner is absent.
Okay, thank you. One point zero two approval of the agenda. Approval for the Finance Operations Agenda of April seventh. I'll put that forward in a motion. You have a second?
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Two point zero one Finance Operations Committee approves the, uh, looking for approval for the, uh, operations. I'm sorry. Let's do that. Moving on to three point zero one. We got action items. We have ten. Over the agenda. Okay, here we go. Two point zero one Operations Committee meet, meeting minutes for March the tenth. I'll put that in form of a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Now we move on to our action items. We have ten action items of two blocks. I'll take three point zero one through zero, three point zero nine and three point one zero separately. So three point zero one is the Asbury Storm Water Project. This is a project to reroute the underground piping at Asbury Elementary School. Ray Showman Jr. Escavating at a cost of one seventy seven, seven thirty four. Three point zero two is the replacement of the multi-purpose room operable wall, Grandview Elementary school. That is to replace the failed operating wall with the Constantine Bible and Company for a cost of one hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. Three point zero three is the, uh, service agreement, uh, approval of that total cost of six thousand twenty four dollars. Service Express Agreement offers software and hardware support and monitoring services and annual cost of six thousand twenty four dollars. This agreement will take the place of Park Place resulting in annual savings of one thousand eight hundred twenty one dollars. Three point zero four is the two thousand twenty five camera project. And, uh, this project is replacing the outdated Indigo cameras, removing Pelco cameras and installing previously purchased Rambus cameras, cost of three hundred eighty four thousand. And that is by Keystone Electric Xenia Systems LLC. Three point oh five Raptors Technology quote. Uh, that is, uh, in the amount of fourth, that forty seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and twenty five cents. Ms. Galer, would you like to make some comments or Aaron on, on the Raptor and the replacement of that, with that system?
Excuse me. Um, yeah, it, the Raptor system is a proposal to replace our current Navigate three sixty, which is our emergency management system, where it is using, I mean, we maintain the visitor access portion, which would be what you're scanning in every building. And then in addition to that, I mean, it would have our recovery plans, et cetera. Uh, uh, from my understanding is, is customer service is lacking with, uh, Navigate three sixty to the point that they're extremely unresponsive and given the critical need of the information that is stored within the software, we need to have customer service that is very responsive. So that is the primary driver in us moving. In addition, uh, from my understanding is this software will allow us to, uh, more effectively integrate with our security systems such as the Rambus cameras. Thus, the proposal in front of you, we're asking for.
Sure. And anyone, uh, should be familiar with Raptors, they enter our buildings. So, okay, moving on to three point.
Can I add to that real quickly? So currently the Raptor is our visitor management. We're going to make it our emergency management also. Because as Aaron said, it is very, currently Navigate has been very difficult for us to deal with. When we do some of our drills, you can't account for all the kids because they're not showing up when they should show up. They're not following through. You reach out to them, they don't respond. We're able to shift everything over, including all of our threat assessment data that we are currently utilizing that system for. So our threat assessments will be in the new, plus they do connect directly to the Rambus cameras. So Raptor will basically take all of this over under one scope.
Okay. So, uh, moving on to three point zero six Accounts Payable Report. Uh, for the, for, uh, accounts payable report and the payroll report for March twenty first. Three point zero seven Golden Apple Award winner, acceptance of the Golden Apple Award to Seth Howell at JS Wilson Middle School, the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. Three point zero eight, the donation to the, our team. Three point zero nine is the committed fund balance, the resolution. I'd like to turn that over to Aaron to explain where it was and what change we're going to make on that. The committed, uh, extracurricular activity.
Yeah, it, uh, I think to start out, I'm just going to read the resolution so everyone has an understanding of what we're requesting. And then I'll kind of give a history to that. So the Finance and Operations Committee recommends the approval of designating revenue generated from extracurricular participation fees, event gate receipts, facility use fees, advertising revenue, Coca-Cola rebate to twenty five percent of the investment income to a committed fund balance for the maintenance of extracurricular facilities. Uh, this motion will rescind and replace the resolution approved by the board on February twenty sixth, two thousand eighteen. So with that said is two thousand eighteen, essentially the resolution that we're asking for approval is the exact same with the exception of our investment income. Uh, as it exists currently, without this, uh, approval of this motion, is our investment income is broken up into four separate categories. Twenty five percent towards our committed fund balance, which is the exact same of what we're requesting. Twenty five percent for, uh, assigned fund balance relating to IT. Twenty five percent for assigned fund balance related to Peasars. Twenty five percent relates to a capital projects transfer. Essentially what we're requesting is only twenty five percent be committed towards our extracurricular facilities. Every year we put a half a million dollars in for a capital projects transfer, which is roughly fifty, twenty five percent of our investment income, assuming the Fed Reserve don't cut rates drastically here upcoming, um, which we don't know. And then, uh, it, as it relates to Peasars and IT, those costs should be embedded within our structural budget as it is. I mean, we've been doing that every year, embedding it. Therefore, all it's doing is it's growing our fund balance, the extra fifty percent of, uh, investment income. Um, so the suggestion is, let's just mark, uh, earmark that fifty percent or, or that seventy five percent really in our, um, into our, our structural budget on an ongoing basis, because that's what we're already doing with our Peasars, IT and capital projects costs.
Aaron, will that help also to eliminate like the deficit that we're seeing in our, um, financial statements and our budget? It would be extra revenue that would help offset that.
To about, to about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. So that's a good thing.
Yes. Now that is, again, it is a little tricky here because investment income is based on the Federal Reserve, right? We don't have a crystal ball. I do, four years ago, we were only earning a couple hundred grand. Last year we earned two point two million. So that shows you the wide margin that investment income can bring depending on the market environment.
Hey, so we went through all the items. So I'd like to make a motion to accept three point zero one, three point zero nine to go to the board meeting at the end of the month.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Moving on to three point one zero proposed final budget, two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six. Mr. O'Toole.
Um, to start, so that this budget does include that last motion we just talked about, uh, as if it was approved. So just so we're all on the same page with that. And there is some risk associated with that, as we just mentioned. Uh, I mean, we're using eight hundred thousand dollars of investment income to balance our budget this year, which next year, that eight hundred thousand may not even be available to us. So just so everybody's aware of the risk associated with using investment income as we move forward. Um, I only have a few slides here. There in, um, just a, a slide, I just modified this for some of the adjustments we had. Uh, I'll go through, I mean, it aligns with the district's mission as well as strategic plan and our superintendent's goals as we move into this next year. We did add a number of positions. Most of those were mandated positions just based on enrollment, such as two autistic teachers with four aides. We added one M L L teacher, um, five, real, five physicians related to our ed program, three full-time custodians. We had three parts. Historically, we've had three part-time custodians. We essentially said, we're going to make all three of them full-time and, and rather than making them part-time. And they were only part-time on the weekends. Um, so these full-time will cover the weekend on Saturday, also serve as a floater during the week. We added another aide, two autistic, two autistic, two additional autistic aides at the high school. Uh, we added and removed a secretary position. We've added more extracurricular hours for elementary school and SSL overtime. Historically, our elementary buildings had no, they were doing a dance or anything. There was really no hours to cover any of these extracurricular events. So we did add hours and to address that for next year. Uh, as we've talked about, it is twenty percent increase, nine hundred sixty two thousand dollars related to our transportation, a contract that we just went out to bid. That's equivalent to one and a half percent tax increase. An increase of three hundred thousand dollars for our debt service. We expected this when we issued the third round of our debt. Uh, we knew that this was going to be the jump year for three hundred thousand. It'll be level funded for the rest of the life of the existing debt that we, uh, have. We had a seventeen percent increase or one point eight million dollar increase in healthcare. This is about four hundred thousand dollars more than what I, uh, presented the last time. Our health insurance continues to, um, be a high inflationary, uh, cost for us this current year and projected to be so into the future. Um, budget includes additional curricular resources, seven hundred thousand dollars in our custodial equipment based on the analysis provided in February. I will mention that because of the tariffs, we just got an email today, that seven hundred thousand dollars will have a five percent increase if we don't order it by May first. And then, uh, overall, we had a two point nine percent tax increase, which is equivalent to forty seven dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. Uh, I consolidated these slides. I consolidated revenue into one slide here. And you'll see the next slide's consolid, uh, expenditures consolidated into one. Um, I mean, the variance is up at the top. It's three point two five percenting. Or you can see that down the left-hand side here is the area that I'm talking about. Across the top, you, you could see those columns represent last year where we ended the year, our current year budget where we forecast and next year's budget, and then the variance comparing the two budgets. Uh, I'll just focus on those variances. It, the real estate taxes, we went from three percent to two point nine percent compared to the last time. That is, the difference of why it's three point two five percent is we did increase our collection rate. Um, earned income tax and increase of five hundred thousand. You could see, uh, our real estate transfer and delinquent tax. I mean, we're collecting so well in our face value of our real estate. That's obviously going to be a reduction in our delinquent that we are collecting. Um, those two work together. Uh, uh, real estate transfer tax is just down low inventory. You could see I already reduced, um, our investment income by four hundred and eighty seven thousand. That makes the assumption that there is going to be three rate cuts. I, I, I'll just sleep it at that because I don't think anyone really knows what the environment's going to be in the next six months. So, um, other local revenue was relatively flat. It, the basic ad and special education subsidies, it, I budgeted according to policy, which is our current year allocation. So this current year is what we budget for next year. Uh, if we get more, that rolls into our capital projects transfer, um, as we move into it. And then we'll catch it up the following year in the budget. And then, uh, federal revenue is down. Uh, we don't think we're going to get as much access money as we once thought we were. They, uh, reduce the reimbursement percentages related to that program. So I adjusted accordingly. But overall, a three point three million dollar increase or two point seven percent. So as we flip over to the expenditure side, the, it, left-hand side is, I mean, the slide is structured exactly like the last. Again, I'll focus on the variances. We've got about one point five million in salary increases. That's just about a little over three percent. You can see on the right-hand side, it relates to, um, we added fifteen positions as I already explained. Uh, we replaced thirty seven positions at a lower rate and most of our contracts have a three percent annual increase related to them. Our benefits increased about two point six million. Our benefits increased about two point six million. Uh that's primarily, I mean, one point eight million of that relates to healthcare. Uh the other major components of it is P Sers and social security higher. More you have, there are a percentage of salaries. So if you have more in salaries, you're going to have more in uh those costs. Um the seven hundred sixteen thousand dollar reduction relates to the camera project. Million dollars more in transportation. We just talked about nine hundred sixty two related to food or transportation, excuse me. Seven hundred sixty seven thousand increase in equipment relates to the seven hundred thousand dollars of custodial I just mentioned. And the three eighty six at the bottom, which was three hundred thousand related to debt service. That's an increase of five point nine million or just under five percent. So what's this look like? Overall, uh the top row, you see that the slides are structured the same. I'm going to focus on the twenty five, twenty six budget. We had about one hundred and twenty four, just under one hundred and twenty four million. Our expenditure is about one hundred and twenty five million. We're short one point three million that we have seven hundred and six thousand. We're going to be earmarked related to investment income, gate receipts, participation fees, et cetera. That means that we have a deficit of one point, just under two million that we're going to need to use our fund balance for. So where's our fund balance? Um it across the top, uh you'll see that we have the description. Our unassigned fund balance or non spendable, our capital projects fund, our committed fund balance, our assigned salaries and benefits, our signed I T in a total. I'm going to skip down to the twenty four, twenty five. Uh we estimate to be and about just shy of twenty seven million in fund balance. You can see the twenty five, twenty six estimate of where we're going to be. Uh it you know, if you uh where we expect that to be, so we're we're obviously using fund balance to give us a twenty five, twenty six ending fund balance of just under twenty, just over twenty six million. And then I added the line, uh the Gus Anderson Field and addition project here. Uh we had the every intention of trying to pay cash for these a as we related to it, but that obviously plays a role in our fund balance. How we're going to be paying cash to these. So again, we have our Gus Anderson Field project that's on the horizon. We also have been talking about an addition to an elementary building because we're out of space. Uh so the idea was going to be to pay for our portion of the Gus Anderson Field project cash and then the additional pay cash. If that is the case, you could see that we're going to end up using about ten million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars of fund balance related to those two projects, and that'd make our fund balance just under thirteen million. Uh I know that it's requested to have a forecast here, so I forecasted out several years. These are the assumptions made, a three percent tax increase, an increase in earned income taxes, as well as other state subsidies. We uh had level funding from our twenty five, twenty six budget that has presented tonight through the next five years. Three percent increase in salaries, P Sers projected rate increases, four percent increase in healthcare, four point three percent increase in transportation, five percent increase in software, and then depending on the line item, I use zero to three percent. So using those assumptions. Um that's tough to see. But long story short, the what we really want to look at is at the top section here, you can see that it has twenty six, that's our twenty five, twenty six budget and then projected out five years. We're short one point three million. If you move over to the right hand side and you just keep on that row, the red line, that those numbers that are red are what I'm looking at. Every year for the foreseeable future, we're about short a little bit more every year from our current year deficit. We expect it, we're using fund balance for the current year deficit because it will have a reduction of, I mean, it it relates to capital assets that we're purchasing. So we don't necessarily have to purchase those every single year. But you could see that we're projecting to have a deficit for the foreseeable future. That does not consider the state in any increase in subsidy real or a mass increase of subsidy related to the lawsuit that the state lost stating that the funding for K twelve education in Pennsylvania is unconstitutional. Um it doesn't account for anything related in our federal money uh where that could end up. Um I mean, there's a lot of unknowns as we're walking through this that are rather material. Um and we don't have enough information to really formulate an assumption related to any of those. So um but at the same time, it's doable. I mean, that's really, you're talking about a two percent tax increase. It that that difference that we're looking at there. I mean, essentially, if we went to the tax, if we went to the index, it pretty much covered. This current year would pretty much cover that deficit for the future years. So it's material for us to be able to navigate into the future is the point. Uh and then our upcoming milestones, we obviously this month, we're trying to have a proposed final budget. And then in the month of May, we'll ask for approval over a final budget. That's the slideshow today. I tried to keep it really short because given a ton of information in the last several months. Any questions?
Now, just one thing that I would like to bring up that's not in the budget, and and I would like to see if there's a way to put it in the budget. I have big concerns about the amount of guidance counselors that we have in the middle and elementary schools, particularly at Bell Valley. Grandview and J S Wilson. And I don't know, I mean, five years ago, we only had a couple S R Os, and now we have a full staffing of S R Os, and we found a way to do that. I I'm not saying that to put one in every building. I know that's not possible, a guidance counselor, but I think we need to, with the amount of emotional issues that we're dealing with, um the large number of E S classrooms that we have, I wonder like, how how can we increase the amount of guidance counselors? And I I'm not, I'm putting you on the spot, and I don't mean to do that. I just sent out a thing this afternoon, but I think it's something that maybe we could look into.
We can let what we'll continue to look at it. You're asking me, how can we? I I mean, the easiest solution is is we're we're recommend or we're recommending a two point nine percent tax increase when the index four point nine percent. You have room there i if you were going to go down that path. Um I I mean, our budget is very lean as we already presented. And only sixty seven districts in the state spend less per student than we already do. Uh I'm not so certain there's any place for us to be able to cut enough to add a single position. Um but we'll, we can explore some, depending on how many guidance counselors you're asking for. Uh I mean, we could really explore that internally to see what.
I just think it's something that we need to think about because I think that we we need to provide more help than we have right now. My opinion.
That's a good point, Sally, but I guess if we're looking to increase the budget a half a million dollars or so or more, is there higher priorities that the administration be looking at? Not saying that's not a priority, but how does that fit in with other?
The counseling positions at the two elementary buildings, we've been in discussion, we're working on a possible solution. It's not the exact solution that you want for next year. It has not been shared yet because it's still in discussion phases, but based on some of the input we've gotten from the data step back, we're at least trying to address those situations. At the middle level, we are not looking to address that at the present time. I think that they can continue to work with the counselor and the interventionist at the middle level for at least another year. But the elementary one, we will work and we will continue to try to find ways without impacting the budget drastically because nobody wants to increase any more than we have to. If you're okay with it, we will discuss it further as a core team, take another look through things, and then I will report back to the school board.
Questions? So with that, uh can have a up put forward a motion to move the proposed final budget at two point nine to the board meeting at the end.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And moving on, item four point zero, thank you, Mr. O'Toole for taking the time presentation. Uh item four point zero one, informational items, informational items. Item five, questions for the public. Here, item six, adjournment, six points, I put a motion to adjourn the finance and operations committee.
Second.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the committee of the whole and day April seventh. That will follow my circle.
Mr. Brink.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Philbeck.
Here.
Mr. Kobilka is absent. Mr. Lindner is absent. Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Ms. Pasquale.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Ms. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Attorney Senate.
Here.
One point zero two executive session announcement, executive session was held April the seventh twenty twenty five for the person litigation personnel regarding litigation. Following litigation was discussed, Prozan versus M T S D removal case. N ninety four C D twenty twenty two Commonwealth Court. Prozan and Aliotta versus M T S D sunshine, twenty C D twenty twenty five Commonwealth Court. Aliotta versus M T S D. Uh one oh five M C dash oh two, oh two five, U S District Court of Western Pennsylvania, Western District of Pennsylvania. Aliotta versus M T S D, two seventy nine W D A twenty twenty five Superior Court. Supes versus M T S D, E E O C five three three two zero two three zero two one seven eight one colon twenty four dash one sixty three, U S District Court of Western District of Pennsylvania. Angela Crest Trust versus M T S D, one one five one zero dash two thousand thirteen Erie County Court of Common, please. Terry Joe New versus M T S D, one one five one nine dash two oh two four Erie County Court of Common, please. Maynard versus Sullivan, Maynard and Sullivan versus M T S D, one one eight two three dash two thousand sixteen Erie County Court of Common, please. Bruce Coffin, uh doing business as Bruce Coffin Trucking versus M T S D, one one three two three dash two zero two four Erie County Court of Common. And then one point zero three approval of this evening's committee of the whole agenda. Have a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Vincenay, she passes. One point zero four pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation of the God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Item one point zero five certificate of excellence in financial reporting, Dr. Campbell.
So I would like to congratulate Mr. O'Toole and his team for once again earning the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. It was presented to the school districts, I'll pass this down for everybody to take a quick look at. And just a quick synopsis, on behalf of the Association of School Business Officials International, ASBO, I'm pleased to inform you that the Mill Creek Township School District has received ASBO's certi- certificate of excellence in financial reporting for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty award, twenty twenty four. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects your commitment to transparency and high quality financial reporting. So congratulations to Mr. O'Toole and your entire team.
Thank you. It it's truly a team effort. I mean, it's really everybody in the business office and even some of those outside the curriculum department does some pieces to it. I mean, it's much bigger than just any one individual. So I I really have to say it, that's a true reflection of the team environment that is created. And um I appreciate everybody's support in achieving that award. Thank you.
Thank you for providing the board, the district taxpayers, the transparency that you do through accurate timely reporting. Okay, moving on, item two point zero one, visitors. Any visitors like to address the board? Okay, then we'll move on. Item three, superintendent's report, Dr. Campbell.
There's no items at this time. Oh, sorry, whoops, sorry. Three point zero one, um by mistake, the April seventh, twenty twenty five Personnel Committee Report from earlier this evening.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel and committee report with the exception of the last position on page six under twenty twenty five summer E S Y staff, the special education assistant, life skills. Support.
Second. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Vincenay, she passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve um that position, special education assistant, life skills support, page six, under twenty twenty five summer E S Y staff. Second. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay.
Take a roll call, move on then, please.
Mr. Brink.
Yes.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Ms. Philbeck. Ms. Newsom.
Yes.
Ms. Pasquale.
Yes.
Mr. Winchell.
Abstain.
Ms. Winchell.
Abstain.
Okay, moving on to slister report. No report tonight, thank you. Item five, old business, any old business. Six, new business, any new business. Item seven, remarks, Northwest Tri County. As always, um the attachment from last month's meeting is on the agenda. A couple of things, though, that really emphasize that part of this attachment is that the Pennsylvania Department of Education held its budget meeting hearing the House Appropriations Committee on Monday, February the twenty fourth. And so they had all the representatives speaking there for the top themes were charter schools, career technical education, facility improvements, long term planning and budgeting, federal implications and federal uncertainty. And the key topic of these number were charter schools. Talking about putting a cap on charter schools and say that just overall Pennsylvania school districts, three hundred and seventy eight million dollars. But one of the key things from the education chairman spoke that he challenged the chairman, he challenged that the classification of cyber charter schools as public schools, emphasizing that unlike brick and mortar charter schools, they're not subject to accountability through school board elections every two years. He highlighted that the Commonwealth Charter Academy, the C C A, has an eleven percent proficiency rate in English. And my students noted that only twenty four percent of C C A students participate in the Pennsylvania system of school assessments or the P S S A exams. Expressed frustration over the lack of local oversight, stating that he cannot address concerns about cyber schools through his local school board, but he also inquired about federal proficiency standards for these schools. In response, wrote state that federal guidelines expect seventy percent proficiency in English, math and science. So there's a number of similar testimonies that were there, and I encourage you to to take a look at that attachment. Okay, moving on, Sir Lindner is not here this evening. We'll catch him up again in the month, from the Erie County Technical School. School board remarks, any school board remarks? Kavanaugh.
Okay, I do have a handful of items that I would like to speak on this evening. First, I would like to start by congratulating the cast and crew of the wedding singer. So was the high school C P A performance this past week was absolutely outstanding. I know a lot of time commitment goes into that, so congratulations to another wonderful performance. I would also like to congratulate our speech and debate team who finished eighth of eighty one schools at the state championship. And Mia Liu and Lily Jones were the state champions in policy debate, so congratulations specifically to them. We had two of our singers move on to all state chorus, Anna Chevallette and Sofina Mazaco. They made it out of the region one, which was actually hosted up here at M I H S to all state chorus. So congratulations to those two McDonald High School seniors. Uh congratulations to Megan Mingarelli from Tracy, who's our interventionist, who Chris has spoke for her this evening. She was recently informed that she won the Northwest P A E C T extra mile award. So she was nominated by Kelly Brest and a couple of other people in her building and for going the extra mile, she won that award. So congratulations to Ms. Mingarelli. And in other comment, I'd like to make just this deals with teachers and their ability to and willingness to share with teachers. You saw a prime example tonight when they came to speak to the board about the conferences and the things that they're doing, getting out into other classrooms. And Shirley's been present at a lot of our data step back meetings when we have buildings talking about, oh, I learned this and I'm sharing this with other buildings. Or I borrowed this from this builder, I'm going to this building to do a walkthrough. So we have a lot of cooperation going on from building to building, not just within our own buildings. So that is a practice that I'm very happy to see, and I'd like to give a shout out to all of our teachers who are participating in this because we have a lot of great people here who do a lot of great things daily. We just have to do a better job of sharing that at times. So those of you who are doing it, continue to do it. I'm very appreciative, and that's it for me this evening.
Yeah, we'd like to thank, thanks, John. I would like to thank the board. It's been a long evening, Board Member Show, four o'clock for the board liaison meeting, appreciate that, and all the committee meetings and committee of the whole meeting. Um as a quick follow up to uh Wade Wade Brink and myself will be joined in P S B A next week to do an initial review of the board assessment results, which will be then shared with the entire board at the end of the month. So with that, item eight point zero one, adjournment, Kevin, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
Second, next regularly school meeting of Mill Creek Township Board of School Directors is a regular school board meeting. The meeting will be held April the twenty first, twenty twenty five at seven P M. We have a motion second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vincenay.